This is going to be a long meeting. Well, there's a lot on the agenda. This should be a fairly important. We'll see what happens. All right, if everybody in the wood, please turn your phones to vibrate and turn them off for the remainder of the meeting. And, uh, can you lead us a prayer?
Let's pray. Most kind and gracious Father, Lord, I come to you once again today, God, and thank you for all your great blessings. Lord, I pray that you'll be with this body of missionaries that are getting ready to conduct business. Lord, I pray that you'll be with each and every one that's going through trials and struggles. Lord, I pray that you'll be with little land in the day, Lord, as they travel from Vanderbilt, Kent. God just touched his blood. Praise your son, Jesus Christ, in thy name I pray.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a call on the emergency session, approval of minutes of previous meetings, I have a motion to approve on the approval minutes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call. Motion passes, next is approval of reports of officers, I have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, two seconds. Uh, any discussion? I think Christie has a second. Roll call. Next is approval of nominees, we had, uh...
Okay, we got Tina Melissa Taylor. We have Kristen Ann Britner. Bitner. Tamara Susan Summers. Frances Marie Marie Milton.
Make a motion to approve. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call. Motion to approve. Next is a bunch of amendments. They're all one-on-one, except for one of the ten bills. Uh, first is one-on-one, number nineteen. Fifty-three, five-hundred, one-on-three, two dollars assistance for five thousand five hundred. The fifty-three, five-hundred, three-on-nine, contract of government agency, five thousand five hundred. Number twenty. Fifty-three, one-hundred, four-ninety-nine, circuit court ever supplies. Six hundred ninety-two feet. Fifty-three, one-hundred, three-three-four, circuit court, it looks like maintenance, six hundred ninety-two feet. This is a bounce on that. The next one here is number twenty-one. Thirty-nine thousand, undesignated and going into fifty-one, nine-hundred, four-ninety-nine, county buildings, other, for nine thousand five sixty-six. The next one is thirty-nine thousand, undesignated, put amount of five thousand, going into fifty-one, eight-hundred, three-three-five, county buildings, maintenance, five thousand. Number twenty-three. It's, uh... Thirty-five, nine-ten, reserve register, eight, three-nineteen, ninety-eight, going into fifty-one, six-hundred, seven-on-nine, R O D data processing, register data processing for three-hundred, nineteen, ninety-eight. And that concludes the ones in the packet, there were two more handed out, another one is working on. One-on-one, number twenty-four. Fifty-four, two-thirty, four-ninety-nine. Corrections, other supplies, three thousand five sixteen, going into fifty-four, two-thirty, three-three-five, corrections, maintenance, three thousand five sixteen. And number twenty-five. Five-four, four-twenty, dash, four-ninety-nine, West Coast Fire Rescue Office Supplies, one hundred, going into five-four, four-twenty, three-twenty, West Coast Fire Rescue Use, one hundred. That, all of the one-on-one budgets, I have a motion on one-on-one, number nineteen, three-twenty-five.
They're approved.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second? I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
Um, can you tell me what number twenty-two scored, all it says is allocate funds for repairs needed in county building, what county building?
That's in regards to the road department, we've had, we've had a tremendous amount of bolted repairs and pipe repairs. And that's been out there this past week, did a bit in contact with me, so he would have some oil or leak out front. They discovered their backflow drainage was leaking, uh, upon twelve-hundred and two dollars for a two-inch backflow drainage. So that's just some of the repairs during the last couple of days, but that's what they're expecting.
Any other discussion? I have a motion second. All minds clear? Roll call. Motion passes, we have another bunch of amendments hanging out tonight from road department, it's the one thirty-one. Uh, this one is... Laborers, uh, sixty-two thousand, dash, seven-four-nine, amount of twenty-four thousand, going into sixty-two thousand, and eighty-four, crew highway operator, twenty-four thousand. That's only one. It's gonna be at the road department, I have a motion on budget amendment, uh, one thirty-one, twenty-three, dash, four. Yeah, that's coming out of, uh, yeah, that's all in our lines. Motion to approve. Have a motion to second. Discussion. Roll call. Motion passes. Ducktown courthouse, sir, that's Mr. Brooks.
Uh, I put this on here for a placeholder last month, uh, I think you see the Ducktown bench, then the courthouse, uh, need to get with a county attorney and the building needs and see the Ducktown when everybody get the gift. Work out fine and free, and get this done as soon as possible.
What we're looking at, we, 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 we're sort of over the place, we're going to build a new, and this come up basically, could just sort of change in her, for her community and looking at it. We would be willing to take that building, rehab it, get it up to code, and we know what it's gonna take to do that. But also let the court system still continue to use the building, with no charge basically, just, 'cause I think they're what, just dating months, all they come up with usually. That's sort of what we're looking at, and what they're willing to do, if you guys are willing to do that. And just take, take on that project, and you guys, you guys, some of them may have got down, I don't know, but anyway, the roof, have a protocol on the roof. Biggest thing, there's some AA compliant stuff to do, and a few, few things, but we think it's fixable, so we're willing to put some money and kind of fix it up, to save, basically, save county money, so you guys, I put anything in it. It'll save us money, so we might have a better new building, probably within four hundred thousand, so. If you guys are willing to do that, that's, that's just great for us, and we're, we're willing to do whatever it takes to do something. And still continue to serve the people and help the people, you know, put that on the court side of that. Having talked with Brooklyn, I sort of had an understanding there, sometimes you may have thought that the city was trying to take over Ducktown Court, which, that's not that, we just want to do the building and basically, get everything fixed up so that basically the court can continue up there. Whether you guys want to use Belenade, do that temporarily, keep it here, do we get rehab, but the sooner we get things going, the sooner we can get that thing rehabbed, and we, we're hoping less than six months, if everything works, you know how that goes. But whether you guys are willing to do, and if you want to do that, that'd be great, if not, we have a plan, we're willing to go regardless, and then we can work together for nothing like that, it's just, it's just an opportunity, I think, for all those both sides of the table to save taxpayer money, and what we're doing up there, none of us have to waste that. We do have some building money, so we're, financially, that's not gonna be a problem for us, if you take load up, you guys, and we went as far, if you didn't hear, talk, I don't know if you guys would like to do a revert clause, maybe some work, 'cause I'm not gonna be taking a lot of long time. But if you done, say, ten year down the road, the next bus comes in, you don't want it, fix it before we don't shut it, basically revert it back to the county. If that's, they revert, there are different ways of doing it, but we can sit down and come up with it, and do what works best for both sides. But I think, with the city property, we own two-hundred-and-ninety acres out there behind it, that city garage that we just built, it's the perfect scenario for us, I mean, flips it up there, and we can make that thing, like I said, for the courts, whatever, and we've, we've done, and the building's ready to come up there, but the building's, it's got good bones, so we've got a good store. Yeah, there's a lot of the older stuff, they have the same, we're willing to step out and do that, and hopefully get it fixed up, and get it to the court, it's massive, the county can be heckin' when it come up there, I know parking's always been an issue with, with court, but we got the property behind it, we're willing to go back there, make span parking, whatever we need to do to make all that work, but for two days a month, as a county taxpayer, just a taxpayer in general, I could, most county spend, definitely building, bringing courthouse, practice for two days a month, so. That would work good for us, get better our perk up there, and do what we need, and then if you guys want to commission meeting, see, or county meeting, anytime, everywhere, we're headed, same thing, I mean, we're still have that room available for whatever county may be able to do there, but we keep it up, maintain it, and basically, pretty good deal, but you won't cost us nothing.
Sounds pretty perfect.
It could be, and I'm hoping, win-win for everybody. So, but that's what we're willing to do, we have an annexing that, and that's, you know, just to give with us, set up time and need, whatever we're doing, Eric, we discussed it, the extra time, I felt that Joe Larry some over, but yeah, I, you know, that's, that's what we're willing to do, and if it works great, it don't, it will, it will, wherever you go, and you go on, you know, we could save a lot of money.
Sound like you just got you a building.
Well, we make, uh, the bill, the meeting, certainly you have, this is like former meeting, we've discussed.
No, because, well, that's question just came up, the chief said, what about the county, court has to be, county meeting done?
That's what the judge said.
Well, I think just before she sort of thought that the city would want to take over the court system, I really hadn't talked to her, I did get with Dan Howell, had him to call Attorney General office. Everybody in Nashville, even the state, the state's favorite attorney, but anyway, we know that, but maybe I could tell you something, he writing, hadn't done that yet, but they're saying, you can have court on the street, if I'm gonna get the gate compliant. So, that's something we need, we want to cut, get a letter from Attorney General office, somebody verifying that, we were going to try to do that, just, just because we, we need to.
I'm just going on the information.
Well, Eric's done a lot of research, trying to find something, nothing, Dan was good enough, I mean, I called him one morning, in about two hours, he had his maintenance back, but everybody had, hold it in the back of the county, but they found it, they said it had to be that way. But even at that rate, if that's a problem, we could turn around, we head to the county, keep the building, do a key year lease to the city, for a dollar or something, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Still, the county's still on with the so-called building, you know, if that's an issue, you know, we done a lot of thinking, a lot of research, and trying to figure it out, because we know these questions are gonna show up when they do leave, we don't want to keep doing this over and over, we're going to have all the big guys first times, and when we could, we could, we can go on and do other things, there are other pressing issues in the county and the city too. But that's, that is the question, we've looked, some research, and got people working on it, but so far, I hadn't talked to her, we see where she heard that, or where she got that information, but we're thinking, it may be somewhere, somebody may have mentioned it, or this Ducktown law court, that we want to take over the law court, which you guys know we don't want to do. The judge said, because all we're interested in is what we have, and trying to fix it, depending on everybody.
So I guess we wait, go to start the process, because whatever you draw up, it's gonna have to come back to us next month anyways.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I guess you would just vote, uh, you know, if, verify everything, and have to pay court prepared for it.
We still have a question out here too.
I just wanted to make sure, who's gonna be responsible for making sure that the courtroom meets the minimum security, because there's gonna be some money.
Well, now that part there, you know, if we get this door, of course, I think if we had a building committee, you know, for the courts, the county court will probably provide whatever they need, if they need, I think she needs a new bench, to be more up to date, you know, of course, safe and last stuff. We, we can do the cameras and do all that stuff, that, you know, whatever needs to be done with it before, it's, it being county court, I'm sure you'd just be like you normally do, you'd have a court officer there.
We, we, we'll take your that, I'm talking about, you gotta have bullet resistant.
We're working on that. So, one is gonna be in Belenade, or go out and build it, it could be blue where it can be taken hard and moved over there when the time comes, or wherever we wind up, so.
That's, that's great, and I, I'm, I almost paused, that's TCA, that the judge is referring to, would be mistaken.
But it's, you know, I'm not saying it is or not, but I, I know Dan was good enough to, to get on the horn, started trying to do some research, we'll dig in, we, we'll get another month, we'll get that third up there.
So, the, you know, you might want to have, uh, you know, building committee meeting as well, if you want to, I guess, flesh out the, the actual agreement.
Great, yeah.
And before you do the time, but if, if, I said it could end up being in place, depending on what we, if we find out from the state, if it can be a city-owned building, or it has to stay county-owned.
Incentive, you know, whatever the process is, incentive, it's based, it's all, it's, it's clear, whatever we need to do, I've done, been, already been doing some work on it, I think we've got a, a meeting on, on the building set order. We know that both courthouse is burned, so we don't know that it's a big, that piece is probably, that's showing Ducktown courthouse, it's not showing Ducktown, I only see Ducktown, Old Ford County, Ducktown courthouse, and that's it. We don't know, but we think that's not a problem, something, believe it, we've been doing, you know, trying to, trying to find out all the questions, if you guys come up with anything, in the, in the middle of the night, or at it down, you can ask, we're sort of, try to work that, I know, I know a lot of places take that though, and we can tell them, but it's not, it's, it's, without having to look at it, there's, it's tough, for, and, and, I guess the biggest word of the city is, you take it all out, you leave it, and bang, it's, it's gonna be sitting there for a long time, and it's nothing that can be used, and it's up there in town, but, yeah, and of course, then, you get into that, and have to do a condemnation, and you have to go repair it down, and then, yeah, it gets into such a mess, we're willing to do that, please, say a lot of that.
We do have a motion holding on this, sir, I would like.
Make a motion to let Eric start with progress of it, so that we can get going. Back to the building committee and go from there, as far as getting that, getting hold from there.
Second.
A motion to second, any discussion?
We don't have a building committee meeting on this.
And Brooks will call that. And can you meet with, you and Brooks get together on the, the building, uh, committee?
Is that a thing?
I'll just get with everybody.
Joey, Keith Parker, Ben Bowman, Greg Brooks, Debbie Davis, Nancy Davis, Chris Martin, yes, Kelly Morgan, yes, John.
Yes. Motion passes, uh, next is, uh, water, convenience center, open top, and then, uh, Mr. Davis, Lush Davis.
You missed the archives.
Oh, I marked through it, oh damn, sorry, archives.
That's Mr. Brooks again, archives.
I put this on here for a while, from, from paper and Jackie, uh, y'all can complain, they're wanting to digitize.
Um, yeah, basically, um, all the old record rooms that are actually stored downstairs across the hall from my office, um, that office is not climate controlled, it's a real room, um, I'd just like to move into a different office, um, Walter has a scanner that he is going to donate to us, where you can actually scan it, and you can do, do that and all that stuff, I'm not sure what that is, but, um, there was a handy, it's possible, this room three-on-one here, that was basically just a storage room, um, maybe cleaning that out, and putting that in there, some work tables, digital scanners, computers, um, basically, the labor that I handed out, basically tells you everything, uh, county news will provide the tables, the, the scanners, computers, and a labor of two days a week, um, and then some other volunteers help actually get the scanning done, um, just feel like these books need to be out, like where they're at, but they're, I mean, they need to take care of those, pick up all the time.
Walter, would you also look to do the other archive room in the basement that's full?
Absolutely, there's a short list there, but there's, there's several years worth of scanning and indexing and making things searchable to do, that we're kind of already involved with at, at the office now, and we need to start with the, uh, county commission minutes, they date back to eighteen forty, and par, there's a few missing, um, and then go from there, a lot of it's on microfilm, um, but absolutely, all that could reduce clutter, reduce storage area, and most importantly for me, make it accessible to the public and the next generation in, online, so they can do that, so. We have people, ninety-nine percent of our traffic at the office in, at the library is related to genealogy, or history, or things like that, all the other business of the county news production and everything is done at my home office, so the labor that's there can easily be transferred here for the period of time it takes to do that, um, and I felt it'd be under the direction of, of Jackie, since she's the steward of county records and the minutes anyway. So, yeah, absolutely, I'm just, I just want to help and get it done, y'all can figure out how, when, where, and why, or what we're gonna do.
Like I said, we have the one archive room there, and then plus this whole area here, it's just about the point where you can't really open a door for a lot of different.
Yeah. Get them.
A lot of times what happens, I mean, just get brought up, and it's kind of open the door, hurry, throw it, before the rest of the stuff falls, especially in here, and I don't know how long it's been since he thinks been in that basement, archive room, that's not full.
Yeah, we could spend some, yeah, spend some time getting the list of what all we have, I've got a partial list, I've gotten with Marion from the, um, genealogical society, that's where all the microfilm that the county, it belongs to county, but it's stored there now, we would be digitizing that, so it'd be accessible online, and then just ma- make a priority list of what we set out to do, and then, this summer and next fall, Lynn has advised me that Cleveland State and the Gear Up program has interns that, that would come and get credit for archival work there, so that's another plan for some of the labor. Um, it shouldn't cost anything to get going, I want to purchase the scanners, um, the first one's a overhead full-page scanner, and the second one will be a one that converts microfilm to a PDF form, where that's where it makes it searchable, and, so you guys could come in and search county commission minutes all the way back, once they're completed, and find out answers to questions you may have, um, and not have to spend weeks going through the old volume, so. Go at it, though, I'll support it, like I said.
I make a motion, would you give Jackie room three-on-one, and Barbara can handle the white people.
And a motion to second, any discussion? Roll call. Motion passes, next is, uh, water, convenience center, open top.
I brought this up a long time ago, and this, this is something that, uh, that I've been confronting with ever since I was, you know, running for commission, if it's open top, so, um, the folks are hiding, putting outside the road wherever they get ready, but, I mean, you know, a lot of folks can holler all the way to Drasty Creek, and this, I make a mention, one time a month, pull on the first of every month, and just, you know, for one time a month, pull. And this is something that's very needed, and that's our, so, that's, you know, that's my pitch, it's not something I want, but it's something that the people are part of, and really, they're really interested, that's mine, that's my pitch, I'm, and it's needed, it's really needed.
Uh, Pan Angel, Robert, can you help us, I'd like to, what's going on?
Uh, so, for, so there's gonna be a difference, so, for your contract for the pull from par, five-hundred and forty dollars per month, you have your fifteen percent fuel surcharge, that puts it to six-hundred and twenty-one dollars per month, then you have your hundred and fifty dollar a month box rental, so it's gonna put it at seven-hundred and seventy-one dollars per month, to pull the open top, it would be a forty-yard open top, and like Mo said, Lush has talked to me about it, I've talked to my workers that are there, um, if this goes through, it does need a set of butterfly gates, so it can be able to be controlled, um, at what cost, I'm not a hundred percent, I've already got a call in, and it's gonna tell me about some of our gates have been, and I've not heard back from him, so it would take two, I'm thinking there's eight, ten-foot gates, so that way, Sheila would be able to have.
More trouble.
Because she said that if, you know, the gate's not gonna go up, there, it'll be, it'll be a beauty. And that was one of the reasons, so the newer, the older commission, that was one of the reasons why it came out, is because of that cost, and the cost of abuse was taking place. At that time, we had a lot of people, whenever the county put over that dump site, we had a lot of people coming from outside of the county, and if you've never been out to the par and dump site, how high the value could go, they could pull it up off, back up in, and she said that if that pops, and it gets on the way, then she'd know they're there, because it make a ding-dong sound, and then by the time she got out, they'd pull that leaf, because they'd already filled out the trash.
Is, is this, is this something, I mean, I know it's needed, I'm not saying it's not needed, is this something like we can kind of talk about during budget time, since we're already six months in?
I don't, I mean, I'm just, I'm, it's, it's really needed, and, you know, sooner the better, I said, we've got, I mean, it's too broken, I've only got one boat. A year, a year ago.
So. Which I guess we're just gonna rest of this year.
With our recent increase in price, is this gonna hurt us, do you think, with being able to afford it?
So like, so, so far, at this point in your whole deal, I got this today from priority waves. I don't know why they sent a ad for a month, but they did. Right now, we are at fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars a kick, three cents. The board, that's for everyone. But that Parner pool, it was three sixty-five, but now it's six twenty-one just for the pool. But then you've got to add the hundred and fifty dollar a month box rental for this forty yard open top. That'll have to be added to it. So that's how it's done, that it's gonna be seven seventy-one. And that's regardless of, you know, if you get two tons in that box, you're, you're gonna have about three hundred and, three hundred and thirty-six dollars per ton. It, it will be your ton cost. The box out of Parner usually, so in the past, I mean, I have all this stuff, like deep sleep and brief. But it'll have three pools one month, two pools, two pools, three pools. So Parner, Limsdale and Reliance are every one compared in tonnage as far as the size. They're all, all three of those sites, one, one month will have three pools, one will have two. And none of them have two, none of them have three. So as far as that cost, it is gonna increase that cost at that Parner site. It's gonna increase it over ten thousand dollars a year too.
I want them to have it for sure. I do, I just want to make sure that we can.
Well, I think if we're gonna look at right now, if we vote tonight to do it, it's only what February or March, things get, I think, since it gets up there.
Yes, so.
So you'll have a thousand dollars for the rest of the year, so that's fine.
You know, and, and before you all, you know, and that's another thing, so, I mean, I've, I've got kids in companies that we've used in the past. I mean, they run through the Parner, hit that a couple of months ago, we're at all cases. Uh, we've had kids, so you get somebody to come out, but I didn't want to waste somebody's time in this division. I'll say, I wouldn't, I'm just doing that. But those gates will have to be up. And I, I would very understand that that open top will not go in until those gates are up. So if it takes four months to get those gates in, it's only four months, but that open top will be. But if you don't, it will be a beauty if they grow. I'm just saying, they, they will be, they'll be before you go in, if they're caught.
So we'll be cool on the basis there? I mean, we'll be alright.
I mean, I, I mean, if, if it goes in February or March, it'll be less than four thousand dollars. And then we're gonna work the rest of the year.
Yeah.
And then we got, you know, we've got room by the time I could do this.
Um, sorry, I'm just comparing. Um, my name is Sarah Wilson. I'm a seventh generation Tennessee, a municipal county. And, uh, I'm building in Copper Hill on Spender Mountain. And my building permit cost me twenty-five dollars. While y'all sit around and you talk about, um, the daily issues that you're dealing with, people are moving in these roads. They're buying up property everywhere. You have Coe River, which I've been a part of for twenty-five years, brings thousands of people in here every year. And I don't see anybody, um, looking at the future. You're dealing with what is going on today. But let me tell you what's happening. People are coming in, they're buying up this property. I don't know who does property here. I don't know how many property exchanges have been done in the last, uh, in the last year. But while y'all are discussing this, your county, your home, the place you love, is going to be transformed into something like Pigeon Forge. If you want to mitigate that, if you want the county to raise money, raise the building permit.
Done check, can't do it. Can't do it. That was our big goal. Can't do it without building inspector and we're not, we don't.
You can mention that we probably don't trust. I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's the bottom line, it sucks.
So how are you powerless, how are you powerless against it?
Well, you can, you can, you can raise it, but then you have to have a building inspector when our cost goes up.
And there are no codes here.
When, when you get that.
And we don't want it.
Does the one-two family dwell code and we went through all that.
It's gonna turn into Pigeon Forge.
But we're getting off the subject of what we're actually.
But we, we thank you because, and we do, we, we, there is stuff that needs to be looked at and one more time. But our hands is tied in so many ways, it's unbelievable. So it's, yeah, I know, it's, but anyway, but we're so limited tonight, but, but thank you. And we, this subject is not over.
We, we really do understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Our only taxing authority is property tax. We're aware of that.
So we're, we're on this subject with the fifth meeting. No, 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 we're. We got a little. I just want to say, wait, I'm trying to mark. We've been done. Okay, so we're on the open top. Uh, you've got, uh, you've got, uh, Dan, you say motion? Do I have, do I have a motion?
I can't, he was the one doing the right, you let her, motions, I don't know, I don't know more.
You have a motion.
I'll say.
Change, change the motion. Change, you know, you better. Yeah, okay, I'd like to hear. Lush might put one in there. Do you want to say? Motion is second, correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Ben Bowman.
Yes.
Barry Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Hush Davis.
Yes.
Chris Morgan. Yes. Kelly Morgan, yes. Tom Duggan.
Yes.
And Matty Mike.
Latin passes. Next is number eight, bid limit.
Uh, Mr. Trump.
We won't talk about this, we're just gonna table it and take a different route to it.
Okay, so we, uh, are you wanting to put it on next spot?
Uh, no, just to, I'll get my jacket.
Okay, no problem. Next is, uh, first, Mr. Hart.
Alright, so we have a meeting several hours here. We've got several weeks we can go. Um, the company that has it now cannot, not breach contract. They cannot, both of us, they say they can't get the personnel. They've not really done a whole lot, we all know that. They really won't. They, they didn't come to the school, I'm an instructor to school, they did not visit the school. Uh, they gave employees that blocked our students out of the station. Um, I had several students that really just came in and said, I'm blocking them. Um, we have about eighty reading licenses mentioned that could have been potential employees. Um, so we're at a spot, uh, if we, we have a contract to deal with a resolution that have four trucks to September twenty twenty-third. Um, they're not making money to that. Once again, you know, you, you bought this company. That's not the end, but anyway, um, or we can go back to the three trucks that we were at prior to this with a QRV running first response hopefully. Um, or we can rebid. Now, to say that somebody else can function as four trucks, I can't. I do know from research I did today, Riley County is up with their employees, sorry. Um, AMR is up for their employees, but there again, they do pay more, they have their benefits. Um, it's more exciting to work in Athens and Quigum than it is in Benton. You know, we get on their home dinners, but before it's boring. Um, so we need to decide what we want to do because each day we are potentially getting sued if something goes wrong. It went really bad the other night. And yes, even if that had four trucks.
It would've been bad.
It's still been bad, but.
Would we have needed five?
We would've needed ten at times. My biggest concern is this is your wall of time. And that river serves up, March. They had a swift water rescue today.
Today?
Today. They had three trapped, I'd give them private boat, get them. Um, our dispatchers are being screened at and cussed when they call and they say they need an ambulance and we're told that we have one. It's more on them. Uh, the police are coming out and helping us with lip assist. Our department's helping, um, we don't have a first responder, so we can't send somebody to these people who sit there. If something's going on, you all know that I lost my father a year ago tomorrow and didn't have an ambulance to come to me and he died. Uh, would it have made a difference? Probably not, but that's not the point. I'm a professional and it was awful. What if it'd been you? What if it'd been somebody else? You know, just having somebody there to come is, is better than that. I know it's a money thing, I understand that completely. Everything we got's a money thing. I hope Pigeon Forge works real fast, real quick. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, my out and out ride is when they four trucks, when they need somebody to do it. But we have to do it as a group, so.
And why can't this, do we have it?
You said they can't find a person.
No, study.
Yes.
Go back, well.
That's the problem.
Straight across the board.
The problem is.
Trying to find people to hire, so we don't know if we bid it out and what we're gonna get.
We don't know the four trucks.
We don't know.
Problem is, the county just has, the call volume doesn't go, there's four transports a day for four units. So that's ninety-six million dollars a day to handle four transports a day. I know that some days we run six, some days we run eight, some days we run one. And you average them all up into about four transports a day, which four ambulances should be able to handle. Three ambulances should be able to handle that. Uh, basically.
All on every other corner of the county.
Sir.
The last thing was something wrong with every corner of our county.
Correct. And we have four.
That'd be possible.
It, it very well could be. So we are in the business of living. And with the exponential increase since COVID, uh, we've had an increase with cost of ambulance, it's cost of fuel, cost of labor. Fifty-two percent, I believe it is, is taking trade schools across the nation, everyone's in the industry, not going to trade schools. I can't affect that. I mean, I can help, I can help pay for people to go to school if we did. Um, our response times, yes, they're not ours, but on the air, on, on, on our, on our bracket, our response time, we're still within the, within what we need to be good. Um, I would love to get four ambulances for the amount.
So you're saying you can't give somebody the work?
I'm giving people work, but it's costing me money beyond what the subsidy is. To get it full time to do it, the subsidy would have to go up to four ambulances.
What kind of money would it have to go up?
I can't give that exactly right now.
I'm not sure what you know that and that, that rebid.
We can. And I'm, and if that's the case, I understand. I would love the opportunity to rebid it. But I'll tell you this, I mean. Doesn't matter if you're gonna do it, it's gonna cost more. It's just the nature of the human. We, we actually didn't rebid it.
The resolution.
The, the original model.
We might have one year of extension option. We got one year option, then station and the contract, there you go.
Uh, well, there, there are some stations in, in contract.
Do you have that contract?
Did you do that correctly?
No, I just prepared the angels. I don't know. They're at, for a contract.
You weren't in the office?
Well, you did, you did, you did get it and read it and brought those regulations back to me. And I did reach out to the angels to provide them. And I have got those in a file downstairs. So they were sent to the county attorney because there were things that had to be done, were held up. Because they did not get back from me at times.
So then it did change, because your regulations got in there?
It, I believe it's the same.
I've got a.
Just give us what's the thing on?
Yes, sir.
What's the ballpark increase?
I don't do ball parts.
Alright.
I'm sorry, I, I, because I.
We can't find a budget, I mean, we need a number.
I, I understand, but I can't give you a number because I don't know. Because I do have a financial calculation that goes into that. I'm sorry, I gotta, I'm, I'm a finance guy and I, I can't do a ballpark. Because like I tell everybody, the pizza's only so big. Doesn't matter how many slices you get, pizza doesn't get bigger. And that's what we're talking about. We're talking about adding resources, but the population size and the call density does not change.
Well, say I go back to this. Uh, my mom said my boy too, and I guess we're like, we are above. When you bought this company, when?
That was July.
Uh, that contract was in place and it was laid out there for you what you was getting into when you bought the company.
You're right.
And now we're trying to change the rules back to the fact. But that should've been took into consideration.
Policies changed since last July.
What, eh?
Costs has changed since last July.
Contract was in place though last July for a certain amount of time.
You're right.
I mean, I've had, my call still was, but I just, you know, deal with it.
Well, there's also a market equal, there's also market equilibrium when it comes to most of the businesses. And there's no market equilibrium when it comes to healthcare.
But that, why do you call it?
Hasn't changed.
I did not get a number in there.
Do you wanna, do you wanna give it?
I could have.
Can you get a number?
I could have a number for you within forty-eight hours.
I guess what, we need to decide between keep, we got, we got that for an hour.
My question is this, is that it comes September.
Go ahead.
And as.
We wouldn't wanna, we wouldn't want him to throw a number out here and thus not, it did not be accurate in this vote.
The number for what? The increase. Well, he just said you can't commit to four ambulances.
Right.
I can commit four ambulances, but it's not. It's not a cost for. We can't take a, a new number from him without rebidding it in.
That's what I think.
And we, once, once he gives us a number, everybody else out there is gonna come right in like four dollars, twelve, and he, well, yeah. Because it's gonna have to go to a bid if the amount increases.
Now, there's the risk. The weight place.
But what is the, the, the amount that we have currently is good until September. If he can get four currently, at that point, then we would get to, so rebid at that point or?
But you're saying you can't run off necessarily.
Not if it's a agreement, an agreement, they're paying for it.
But if we, I mean, if we stay like we are, we pack it in. Because there's stuff in there that doesn't cover us and they've reimbursed us and all that stuff, so.
Being that the current subsidy is only good until September and the inability, the possibility, like you said, to not be able to fund it afterwards.
Right.
Is that, should not that be the larger discussion? They still much, how, what did you say?
I hold up in the meeting that comes September, when it's time, you know, they paid a hun, was it a hundred and eighty thousand? Till September for the fourth annual.
For four thousand.
We don't know how we're funding it after that anyways, because it was one time money that we used.
Okay.
So that's September, how, I mean, all this has to have to be adjusted, uh, to say how we're gonna fund it. So, I mean, there's a, there's a line on the table.
And to me, Steve Bieber speaking again, that's the larger discussion. If you can't fund it after September, I, I'm sure you don't want to hire a bunch of people then come September and say, alright, we gotta go. That's the larger question.
Where I'm lost here, and I ain't never been in here before. But when I bid a contract and I got it, I had that fear to it until the end of it.
Yep.
Didn't matter if things went up, things went down. Uh, four hundred bolt makers drug up on me, didn't matter. So my question is, what's the difference here? I mean, I'm sorry if you can't afford it, but indeed you said you could.
But we didn't have, the four ambulances was not black and white.
The original bid was for seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Were you saying? No, there's, no, there is a contract. There is a statute. There was three options, every option, please. We, we. We got option B. Three of them. And then land. It works. Like, no problem. Oh, yes. And we, we should pull over, yes.
For one time. One time you got the man exposed to this September. And that's about a year. We have a certain.
That works, I'm sure. That's what we're saying.
I think we do deserve a chance. Third. Congratulations. We're the coast, then it's. Or, we can break the bank.
I think. Kim, has he come back with numbers? I mean, because we're gonna have to start budgeting, and that's why we know what we're looking at, where we're at, we're just talking every day.
Well, let's ask you one other quick question.
Yes, sir.
We was in option, was it the?
We had three, okay.
Okay, when we went to option one, made four ambulances, alright, y'all pop this out, I, I, okay, I got it. So, we added another hundred and eighty thousand dollars to finish through September. So if you can only run three ambulances, you gonna give us a hundred and eighty grand back?
Yeah, they do.
That, that's what we gotta get in the contract.
Yeah, that's what we gotta get in the contract.
We gotta get a win.
So that's true a little bit.
Yeah.
And that's what, and that's what, yeah, we talked about for the late. We don't know, I'm gonna add that. We still have to pay it, but then there's reimbursement in the course, in the course.
We just gotta put it in the contract, yeah, because on the contract.
Okay, and we rebid?
We don't rebid.
I know, I, I know, I know, might be, no, that's what we're saying.
We don't make the decision, no, because every day that it's a breach of contract.
Yeah.
If we're looking at something bad, that means we'll be sued. And you know they're gonna come after a county really, really bad.
Well, I'm gonna go and force my opinion, I've got, you know, go with three right now, let it ride September, and then we figure it out, but that's me, so you've got mine. Can we do it with the contract?
We have to amend it.
Have to amend it, yeah.
Why, I mean, even if we leave it in place like it is, with the four, and we put in there that they reimburse us, we're covered either with both ways, if something happens, a memorably.
Cause I don't see us getting four ambulances.
And then in September, it's like.
It's, I don't want, I don't see us getting.
It's not that we wanna get it out, once we kinda look through budget and know what we're looking at, how much money we have.
How much money we got, instead of jumping.
And then kinda figure out from that September.
Okay, Mark, you don't put some, you gotta wait.
And then you don't.
Seven forty-eight hours, you can give your, a number.
Excuse me?
Seven forty-eight hours, you can give your number.
So, I mean, that's kinda what, I mean, that's kinda where I'm at, is kinda. Leave it how it is currently, and make the amendments where we're covered in our contract. Or, if, if they can get four, they get four, if not, it needs to be in there that they're reimbursing us our costs. Him get us the numbers, and then we have those numbers when it comes time to work on the budget, we know what we're planning for going after September. And then at that time, we can go to that age. Because that age is definitely covered, and that's, it's like soon, if we need.
Well, I mean, if that covers, you know, basically, the current state of the agreement, it would be that you're wanting four. And he's supposed to make a diligent effort to staff four, but if he's unable to, he would reimburse for, for part of it, so. I mean, there's always a potential liability, you know, if he didn't staff four, but, uh.
Does the liability switch to us?
Is that liability gone down the coast?
Because, because we are allowing it to be in breach, I think that's the biggest.
So, I gotta tell you, you're something about.
Yeah, that's where I, I mentioned about, you know, doing the analysis to see what would be added with is three enough, is four enough, you know? That way you, you would know what you need.
It seems like the contract needs to be amended to say three, because that's all we can possibly add. And, and we get that money returned to us, and then get a number for him to look at for September.
Well, I'm gonna say, the, on this, there is no right answer, but I think the best thing is to do what kids talking about.
Like, if we can make that legal.
And it takes liability elsewhere.
And when you can run four, you're gonna run four, in any time. And when you don't, you reimburse.
Are you saying we need to drop back three to nine, go liability?
That, that's the question, yeah. That, that's the question, that allowing them to be in violation switches liability more to.
If it's a possibility to do it immediately, he's going to sign it, he can go back to green. So we're not liable.
We'd be stepping back to option B, what was it, B one, two, B eight, C D, C B B. What do you find?
Option one, option two, option three.
Option two. Two, twelve, seven, two, four.
Three, A O S ambulance, and one spare. Okay, this one is seven hundred and twenty thousand, three A O S ambulance, which means paramedics.
Right.
One paramedic, not two basics or a basic underlaying, two, uh, three A O S, one spare, drum, and an A O S quick response unit. That means a paramedic on that Q R V, maybe for Friday, ten hours per day. And the two A O S can stay in the west and one in the east, and the Q R V could be on the east side of that.
I didn't think, I didn't think it had in there, there's a connection on which one had to be by the numbers of cost.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I read you wrong, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I did that. Um, paramedic to option three, which is two twenty-four hour A O S ambulance, and two twelve hour A O S ambulance, and one twelve hour A O S quick response. And the seven.
And they were allowed to go to twelve, a night shift, a night shift, that make that one ambulance, although they run a shift, but it would still make the same high, that number of hours.
Which made the three ambulance, that's the twelve hour, and then on the hours, and then on the hours.
So that was option.
That was option three.
Action three. So we were at option three, we went to option one, we went to.
And it doesn't include that spare ambulance type of.
I wanted to preemptary, sure, no, certainly, it, it, not know anything about the ambulance contract, but it seems from what I've heard, for temporarily, that the ambulance contractor has a liability insurance policy. You should look into him making the county a loss P E on the policy, and the insurance covers the county if the county is sued because the ambulance contractor doesn't fulfill his contract. In other words, be an identification insurance agreement. He may have to pay a larger premium to have the insurance, and maybe you can help him with that for the temporary adjustment. But it seems to me, the liability is what you're worried about, the way to cover it is ask him make the county a loss P E under his liability insurance policy.
Well, that's.
Uh, that's, they don't make sense.
It makes sense, but I can't, I can't commit to that without figuring my, my, my.
Of course, I just suggested, that's all.
I can't commit to that, unless, I mean, at that point, who knows what that cost occurrence would be?
Is that in the contract, is that in the contract now?
No. So, one, I don't know if the carrier will do this. Two, I don't know legally.
If they were checking on.
We check, but legally, but on the third, on the other flip side of it, is, we might not want that frequently.
May not, we don't want a lot of things, but.
I mean, look, I, I, I promise you this, that you have every commitment in these, giving everything possible to make this. But understand that I have no control, my reimbursement from Medicare, Medicaid, I have no control over the hair mix in this county. I have no control.
Care myself, later on.
Yeah, and I have no control over how the contract was originally written. Yes, I did acquire the company, that doesn't mean that I agree with exactly what they wrote the contract. Um, but costs have changed since July first of last year.
Absolutely.
If the healthcare across America is having a crisis, I don't think from a liability standpoint, anybody's gonna have a hill to lean to stand on when we're in a national crisis with healthcare. Uh, there's counties, this is not the only place that this happens, it happens everywhere, the city of Atlanta, Knoxville, everywhere this happens. But I assure you that from an AmeriPro Health standpoint, we're doing everything we can to do this. We're gonna revamp, it was pointed out on some of our hiring bonuses, I said, they weren't boosted enough, they're gonna be boosted, they've already been boosted today. As soon as they go through the, the, the curriculum, or the algorithms tonight, they get boosted by them. So, we're doing everything that we can. I will pay somebody to go to school, anybody up there wanna go to school, I'll pay for you to go to school, I'll pay boys to school, they'll get on in. I mean, there's not many companies that do that. We do have great benefits, and I, I, I would beg to ask anybody that are around us that commits on 401K at fifty percent, up to sixty percent, that's what we are. That's unheard of in the ambulance. The largest ambulance company in the world doesn't offer that. So it's our benefits, we are very competitive in our benefits, extremely competitive.
That's good.
And we are extremely competitive with who is reimbursed and signed on most, but they're only confined by what we can.
When it comes to you hiring, how do you advertise?
And all the, 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 the.
I mean, if I don't have a load right now, we're gonna continue at the end, and we'll come back at the end and finish this up on what is up. Uh, we've got three options, if there's no option given, we'll run the call, we'll throw them all three out, and one of us gets paid tax, but. I mean, I don't wanna be, if I go pay with that, y'all ready to move on?
Yeah, let's move on. Moving on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just say a few words, I just put the suggestion about the financial condition of the county, I don't wanna get caught in the two-hour rule, I didn't know about it. I have some very brief remarks to make, and I get out of here, I mean, get out of your hair, but as a person who's paid taxes here for fifty years, I just got a couple of words I would like to suggest that you all consider. Because you're a long way from budget, that you're a new commission, and the structure of the county's tax structure is got to be modified. Sir, you've mentioned we only have authority on. Okay, this is, it takes me three minutes, Mr. Chairman.
The agreement, we've got a agenda, let's run through it, I will come back to you as soon as we.
Well, as long as you like, you, you're private state, then I'll wait.
Yes, sir, I'm on your side, okay. So, as I say, next to the total notice, school district three vacancy, all I need to know is, when you have a vacancy in district three, that vacancy will be up to both next month's meeting. The notice will be paid for, I, I'll have to put it in there. I just think you know, I know there's some discussion about whether or not you have applications, the state does not require it, however, we have done it before. Does district three want to do it by application, or why put it in the paper?
Oh, yeah.
Y'all listen, everybody, okay, so it will be in the paper sometime in the next two weeks, giving notice about the vacancy. Uh, the applications are available online in Robbie's office, and I'll make sure, I, I know, Mr. Grant, I have a copy, I'll make sure to make sure that the, you and Jeff, you keep, uh, sorry, one. Oh, I have one, okay, so when somebody asks for it, it'll be there.
That way if they ask me, I can, you know.
And that's what.
Robert, here, if I could pick up one here.
I, I, I'd have to pick it up and return. Okay, to my knowledge, the drive down office, she just warned that we picked up and returned.
And if y'all want, uh, uh, prior to that meeting, we'll set that up, it's our problem, and y'all have to contact information.
And I tell you what, I'll go so far, I'll, I'll, we'll email everybody, copy it as soon as they give, prior to they come out the package, so that way you'll have the phone numbers and all the information on that.
Now, the deal on that is by nomination, the audience generally can make presentations, but only commissioners can nominate, nominations do not require second. So they, they do not require second, first person to nominate, we'll be the first person to nominate, and that I have to announce at this meeting, so I'm willing to announce that. So, with that, say anything else on the school board vacancy.
I have a question.
All right, we're going on to sanitation, uh, that's me, yeah, sanitation, we did make the other day.
This lady has a question.
The sanitation.
I have a question, isn't all you be advertising in Polk County here?
Yes.
So it's not in any kind of social media anywhere else?
The commission wants to do that, the only requirement is by state law, I have to put it in a, a paper of general circulation throughout the county. We will also send a copy to the, uh, paper above the mountains, which is in district three, because that's the primary focus of what this folks come. So, with that being said, sanitation, we met on this other day, sanitation did go up some, we have new providers, the new providers helped us out above, Charlie, I just wanna go ahead and wipe this out. They helped us out, uh, our old ones kinda pulled out, said their equipment was down, this and that, newest stepped in, took over, and it's running good. We had an issue the other day, we had, because of the way the pipeline was built up, the other mountains, and we had, uh, new sensors going into the pre-pressured, they got them in, they took care of it, and within a couple hours, it was taken care of. Any questions on sanitation?
Well, I have a question, please, I don't know if it's true, but it's on Facebook about Bradley County's bees going into the dump.
Yes.
So I was just wondering how.
We have convenience centers, we do not have.
Mees.
We have convenience centers, we do not have waste stations, nor do we have, uh.
Transfer.
Transfer stations, so we do not have a way, we don't charge, the county is required to provide convenience centers for household trash. Okay, now, on this right here, but Bradley County's different, they have.
Right.
Waste stations, so yes, they're going up, they're going up substantially, from what I heard.
But my question was gonna be, how diligent are we checking waste, uh, waste the waste?
Very, very, very. Last time I was, I run three off myself, I was just feeling anxious. Matter of fact, I called Robbie Blaine, I was gonna have some questions. Uh, on this, Joe.
Yeah.
Mr. Stevens, can you, uh, can you have a?
Yeah, I wanna.
We talked about passing the money, so, if, and this was kind of Joe's brainstorm, if you wanna address it.
I know what's gonna blow on it.
Uh, whatever you wanna do, Joe.
I'm bringing it up, I'll shoot for the deal. Uh, what we're gonna do to keep from having to raise taxes to pay for this garbage, we are gonna. I'll say this, we're gonna restrict some businesses and entities from using our garbage. And I just will blow on it here in a minute, you'll be ready to hold things on, or?
Yeah, it has to be ready, uh, it'll be, uh, one, one, one group.
Whereas the county of Polk is required to revise sanitation sites for residents of Polk County, and is glad to do so. And whereas the cost of providing such services ever increasing, and equipment is expensive, and purchase price remains unregulated. And whereas the county wants to keep its citizens' cost to the minimum in regards to taxation while still providing the access to sanitation sites. And whereas one of the biggest operational costs to the county is the number of pools of contact, contactor boxes from site location and tonnage, which is greatly increased due to specific types of business trash. Now therefore, it be resolved by vote of the Board of County Commissioners of Polk County meeting in record session on this the nineteenth day of January twenty twenty-three. At Polk County Courthouse, admitting that the following business types, trash are hereby banned from the county sanitation sites, in addition to any already disqualified. Number one, hotels, rental cabins, bed and breakfasts, oka, oka. Number one, hotels, rental cabins, bed and breakfast occupancy that falls under the County Hotel Motel Act. Two, unpaid campsites. Three, micro breweries, stores utilizing on premises, beer sales. Four, restaurants. Five, wedding venues. Six, any company, business, or individual that receives any compensation for debris or trash cleanup or disposal or removal. So, I feel like we can save on the amount. Be up to a vote here. We sure kept down on time.
I mean, that's the only thing, uh, Mr. Higgins, the only thing that I, I mean, you're talking about, the only thing, and I, I just asked to talk back. Would there be like a forty-five day if it passes?
I would say we might get, uh, if we vote on it tonight, we might go in effect, uh, April one. And I feel that everybody, plenty of time.
That would need to be, uh, the bottom airport says, upon passage, it would need to be April first, including that resolution. Okay. Sorry, I just, that kind of helped my.
I mean, exactly, with everybody, April first, we give everybody time.
Sounds great with me. My motion to the board.
Thank you. I have a motion to say, any discussion? Go call.
Colleen.
Yes.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane O'Malley.
Yes.
Ray Brooks.
Yes.
Eddie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Morden.
Chris.
Yes. Ellen Morgan.
Yes. That passed. Okay, uh, sanitation's over. Oh, God. Internet, uh, the internet, what the committee, internet committee, met the other day, we talked with a volunteer committee. Hammered out a idea, and I looked it up to the best of my ability. I think it captures everything that y'all should have a copy of. Uh, the, there was six applications that were applied, and that was on the back of the, uh, of the motion. The motion that was made, after the meeting made, was to prorate the amount given by the six applications. And to only pay for each application that was finalized. Now, they come back in and said that they still were gonna hold us to the ten percent match overall, but there is another grant coming. This year is supposed to be double the money, and they seem to feel good about our chances of getting our other four, uh, applications, took care of that grant.
I say we need to take that out because legally, even though I trust B E C, legally, if we enter into that agreement, we probably get that whole nine hundred thousand more dollars, and in legal terms, that one, they don't even have to go after another grant. So, I say we admit that.
Yeah, well, right now, we've already admitted the ten percent of the award, which was one point. Six.
And if we go along with this, we're, I mean, we're just basically saying it's yours, no matter if you go after the rest of the grants or not. We need to hold on to it.
And the way they sound, the way they sounded on that, you know, whether they get two sections for the whole time, or they get ten sections, that's not cool. That's not happening. They need to make sure that that doesn't happen.
And as far as which plan we go with, I think there will be a few. I don't know many much, but they won't go the one eighty thousand cheap.
Yep. Well, the reason, the reason I passed that amount, and it looked had one on it, was because the motion was made for the six. So, it has first priority for discussion.
We gotta vote on it and vote on that.
That's right.
Yep.
Because you know I wouldn't have made another, just because.
I think.
That because I kind of had a feeling how that would go. I had nothing better to do.
So, did we, did we officially sign a contract? I know we done a resolution, but like a physical contract?
Often I know of the resolutions that by law is a declaration.
Well, I mean, I know it's on their side, yes, but, I mean, they have to produce us a contract.
They do, but they don't have to do that. My understanding is they start to actually work.
And we don't have to play until it's actually.
Done.
Yeah, at the end.
And then, you know, as well, whenever that was all done, we were on the county, then the R and P process, even though John was myself, we argued with, argued with it happened. But all that was complete, and prior commission did vote to move forward with that. And like John said, you all have one in front of you right now, that is six, go with it now.
So, we vote as far as from base.
Yes, yes, uh, yes.
Mr. Chairman, pass that subject.
And we are only, we don't have to be done by nine o'clock.
So, you don't hear what I'm saying? Oh, great.
Well, I can't have a face with friends.
Are you about four minutes?
Four minutes, okay.
Actually, I've got three minutes, because bring this one with you.
Um, this was a document from December second, twenty twenty-two regarding the B E C installation drive down to Polk County. And he said it was his resolution. I asked to email him, Hatcher and Helen Morgan, who I spoke to on the phone. The past commission made a great mistake unanimously voting to give B E C one point two ninety dollars for the stolen drive down to Polk County. Who were the prior commissioners that voted yes without knowing all the details? These are the issues I see. I'm not a lawyer, but if there was never a signed legal contract, we should not have to mind a verbal prior commission vote. Why wasn't a lawyer involved in all this? This was said that maybe determined before the contract is written, what areas are going to be completed? Don't we have to say what areas we want finished first? We are contributing a lot of money to this project. Zones will change after B E C verbal proposal, either by that or the guarantee. I was told B E C could do a small area if it still get up to one point two million dollars. What's the type, right? How much money is going to reach this first? From what I understand, B E C, who is getting a middleman to do the work, and Array Communications, which later found out that it was an established company with two employees from Array Communications, were only the ones to get it funded for this project. Why weren't actual internet providers companies to propose?
Would you like for me to answer why the zone six is the reason why it's one first? You can't decide if you're gonna do zone, say we're gonna do zone fifteen up here. What are you gonna connect it to? These lines are coming out of Bradley County. You have to connect it to something that will die wrong. We don't get to decide where it comes from.
Well, they, they, we've, the state is the one that decides that.
That's why it's coming out of Bradley County. It has to be connected.
Yeah.
I understand that one, I understand that one.
Yeah.
I mean, that's why we can't just decide what zone we want to do.
Yeah, because this is not our decision. We would gladly give a piece here, a piece there, and a piece and a piece of it.
Why not?
You know, that is, I mean, because.
But there is no contract. I really believe there, this needs to be.
Because that's best they. It's a contract.
So, we had a contract before the work was started.
They took the ten, yes, when they start the project, but they took the ten percent amount.
I understand.
That's the third point percent. And ours not to see, yes, why we.
I understand.
If we've got that, I don't know, thirty minutes, we would still only do it once that five, because we've got. The reason we only had two was because we took out our R F Ps, not because we want to, and this was something that's like a minute ago. And I have it here on my phone, trust me. We had to take out our R F Ps, so it went to the paper, and it was done two days before deadline? Because we already put it out too.
Well, we've got a quote for B E C, who's not an internet provider, and also a ray company, which may be the fraud. So, why didn't you contact A T and T, Sprint, whoever, internet providers, to actually do the work directly?
The only people in play, we didn't get them to go apply. They applied and asked if we would do the ten percent to show and get the points. They were applying for us. A T and T didn't come to us and say we will apply.
They did not. Nobody asked.
Nobody.
Nobody wants you till it's back, and then they'll spring off of it. But we've got to get the pump back before anybody wants to touch it, see? Just like if you're on the main road, then you've got a chance of the Xfinity or somebody coming along and jumping on. But till that nine trucks there, nobody will touch it.
Right. So, these are internet companies, they not do this job?
No, no.
I, I'm sure they can.
Well, I mean, I, I guess they could if they're relaxed.
But can we contact them and see if they're interested?
But if you put out.
This is their business.
Nobody, yeah.
Only in the paper, though. What if they don't do the paper?
They, trust me, contacts charter every, A T and T, they all knew that grant was out there.
Yeah.
Everybody in the business knew that grant was out there.
But B E C is using a middleman to do the work, so there's lost money right there.
Yeah, Twin Lights is an internet provider.
That's right.
The internet provider.
But they're a middleman, so they're making money off of this.
Yeah.
So, we can't go directly to who they're gonna use.
Yeah, contracts, like they have middlemen too, some contracts.
Did we send air stuff to contacts A T and T?
No.
And everybody?
No, they all, they all knew that it was out there. I mean, they literally knew it was out there. There's no way anybody with an internet service did know that.
Well, there's no contracts as far as I'm concerned, but they want to be checked out.
There's a resolution that's filed.
But it's not a little document saying that you agreed to give this money.
It's, well.
It was, yes. Did you not read the resolution? Did you read the resolution? Have you read the resolution?
No, I just.
Okay, all right, uh, that's, yes, it actually does. It says, the two providers that gave our R F Ps work in the resolution, both the ray and volunteer ray.
So, commission votes to do this is a legal, legal, edited, legal agreement.
Hey, Eric. Because I, I'm getting ready to move on, but if the commission votes to do something, is that a legal claim? Yes, it does.
Uh, well, I would need to do some research on this one, because where I could, if it means for any of us, but it would be a cost.
Now, you're part of the Brian's, based on my resolution, right?
If the commission votes tonight to go before amputations, unless I'm.
But you have to sign a contract. There was no contract B E C signed.
The contract comes after, that's what I was telling you. Until that works, not, there will be.
So, until.
Okay, so what do y'all need to do on the, uh, the internet? You've got a, a resolution in front of you that deals with the six, not the nineteen.
I make a motion, go straight to option two.
You make a motion to go to option two?
Yes.
For here. Is there any complaint on that? You say, well, I was gonna move on to option two, because we don't have a motion except for one. So, one dies for lack of motion. Is that all right?
All right.
Where's two, Robbie? You got two. Two says the same thing as one, except it has the nineteen.
Now, we don't mean it's more, we don't read, put that in the line.
Well, that's, I don't know if it's actually in there, but the money.
I make a motion, go straight to option two, without complaining on all of the things that's on the paper, based on.
First you say.
Future grant.
Yes, what you're saying.
That's just going toward existing grants, minimal. And it's like.
I find somebody say, I don't think, did anybody say that?
I make a motion, go straight to option two. I think they need to let Eric take some time and look into this to see where we are bound to do and where we aim to, before we decide. We've got a lawyer, let's use it. All right, that's fine. I'll draw my motion. That's what we're gonna do. This one, we're gonna take care of everything right here, as far as money.
I'm gonna make sure.
We're probably. What's called half and, you know, so be it.
Bruce, you would draw your motion?
Yep, so we made it there.
Okay, any other motions on the table?
Now, that's what I put, that's what I put in my motion for, and I'm gonna give that money. This is the cheapest way to proceed with it right here. Well, you can see, agreed.
What if they don't, what if they don't agree with that grant, where we are thinking?
So.
What if they don't agree with that, B E C? What if they don't agree with that, though? Where, where, where we are thinking? Yeah, with, with grades amended.
Well, you just like that grade than that, that ain't it.
Well, okay, I mean, I'm just saying, if, I mean, will it, will it kill it? So, if, if, you know, or will we be able to come back and renegotiate or what?
Well, I don't have a problem with there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't either. I don't, you know, I just don't want us to keep rolling it around. I mean, I just feel like that if we don't, if we don't get a base started somewhere, we're not gonna get nothing nowhere. That's my only thought. And I want the vote to be down. I do. I believe me. I mean, you know, I do. I bet anyway.
And as far as money.
You know.
The buyer is gonna end up liking.
I know.
It's not going away.
All right, next we got, uh, East Side Court Room, that's Commissioner Brooks.
Uh, I just gonna update everybody on this, from building meat, we got everything ready, R F Ps, and there are real gray areas about the spec still on K Lard, and we're waiting on C T S to tell us if they can take those R F Ps, we'll go out.
Good to meet you. Anything else on East Side Court Room? If not, we're going on Employee Appreciation Day. I made that reasonable motion. We added a day in the holidays, and I understand that you can't accept it, that the day that we gave them, which was nationally recognized Employee Appreciation Day, has some issues, and they might be changed to date. Is that correct?
Correct. First of all, everyone else, we, you know, we all appreciate day out, which not that, what happens is, is with it being in March. So, if we're gonna close all county buildings, for instance, you got court going on that's gonna be happening this year. So, it's gonna be all county buildings but the court is closed, uh, employee appreciation. As well, talking with Gina, there could be times for this fall then, if that lifetime to be able to take in their property taxes. And so, instead of it being all county buildings but Gina's office is open, what we would like to be able to do is, is to move our Employee Appreciation Day to the day of July, that is agreed on by the most of us as elected people. And what we mean by that as well is, is so if it's, if fourth of July falls on a Tuesday, we could put our Employee Appreciation Day on Monday, and it'll be off Monday, Tuesday. Like this year, for instance, we know that we're gonna be having our fireworks celebration on the fifth. Well, even though we've had some work on Monday, if all our employees would say, hey, I'd like to be off on the fifth, and be part of the fireworks appreciation day. And that's all we're asking is, is to let us as a body of elected vehicles that works best, move our Employee Appreciation Day from March till the day in July, that we would all be able to decide on.
You're gonna decide on one day.
One day.
One day.
And then we decide every day.
If we divide it.
If that way all offices and clothes, all, it's, it's.
One day.
And that, that extra day for our employee appreciation.
I have a motion on that.
Make a motion.
To allow them to pick the day and.
What is the budget for that? What is the budget for that?
The budget is holiday, is holiday pay, is standard holiday pay. It's like, like, yeah.
Can I ask a question on that? I hate to add, is there a way that in, in your amendment or your second or whatever, can, can my office, uh, flex that day in any time in July? Because our guys are gonna be, are gonna have to work, and.
That's right.
Can, can, can I, can you, will you just allow the, the officials to set a day in July?
Absolutely.
And because I, it's gonna be, my guys, you know, they, they work every day.
I can see. The problem is when you've got one office open and the rest closed, like in civilized courthouse and stuff, it makes it, uh, part of what offices are gonna be open. part of what offices are gonna be open.
Yeah, everybody's confused, but here's the.
It, 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 just, just let us do it like we always do with our holidays. We don't get, we don't get the fourth of July, we'll take the 12th, or we'll take Christmas in July.
Motion, who has the motion? Let's do about the second, any other discussion? Office owner, Robbie, you got anything else on it? Jerry, your office owner, you got anything? Everything good? All right, off.
Oh, it's.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Not this year.
Yes. And most of the, the next is mentioned RFP from vehicles, that's sheriff's office, sheriff, you want to, uh, give us a quick overview on that?
The quick is that, uh, under the state contract, uh, here in Tennessee, we cannot find the, uh, the dealer, just tell them, we can order them, we can put them, we don't wanna get them. I did find of, of, of one dealer, whom we bid out, one dealer down in Unadilla, Georgia, that's on, on, on the law. And he doesn't go through state contracts to bid, and that, his price is really close to the state bid that it is. So, and I'm needing to.
And what was the final quote?
We're getting two of those SUVs and one truck.
Eight, two thousand five hundred, that was for two, two.
None.
That quote. Yeah. We're gonna do, take, take the quote in the SUV type two, and then the truck, one truck. That's what it is, he just gave us the price of the vehicle. He didn't give the two. He knows, yes, he's got them, yes, you know, I mean, they're, they're both exactly the same.
He's giving you his, his bid amount.
Yes, yes, he was the bid amount, they didn't do the four.
But the two dealers that were bidding, the two bin number, their vehicle from the interceptor, their vehicle. They took it in there.
Two, thirty seven, five, forty five.
And so, whenever it came in, that's what we rated it, was two vehicles.
I think two or three, are they three meters?
Two, two SUVs and one truck, total was three vehicles, three.
But there's only two bins turned in.
Thirty seven is about the price on the SUV.
On the SUV. The ship rocked over in forty five.
And then two at forty five?
No, one at forty five, the other two are SUVs and thirty seven.
But there's only two bin numbers.
He, he sold the truck to me, two vehicles for two months now at the same price, I was hoping we'd get it, but, that's it, y'all's discretion. You can buy the third bin number, Nick, pretty quick.
Uh, I, I, I plan, yes, I can get it tomorrow.
You had on your bid, that you sent in three?
Yes, I did. But he only bid two of them.
I, I think he, I think he was assuming that, since both of them are the same price, that he could just give you the one price and we could double it.
Why do they write quantity two?
That, that actually is.
At that.
I make a motion to Bruce, and then the sheriff, and then the sheriff provides the minimum. Say. And then give it to us, how you guys say.
Eric. That's good, but. What?
Only a guy's price in our office.
We do, we also know the bid loss, that's why I'm asking Eric if he's our candidate, I'm sitting right there. Like Joe said, well, go hell is God, I'm not, I'm used to that, so, and we get by this.
When they do the.
In your meeting. He gave you price, and it's been priced times two, three vehicles, it's just that he turned it on two.
So he's only three, that they only set two on there?
Put the two bin number. But they put the price for all three of them.
No, no, it isn't.
No, it isn't.
Why, we come from one.
That, that's.
SUV is twice.
So that's the price for all three cars, vehicle stolen.
One point.
Right, yes.
And he says he get a bin number in the morning, right? Right, here, here, sir.
I wish we went over this before we start this. Well, they're not hitting on the thing, you had three vehicles on, or requested.
That, that's what me and the Ford man have talked about for three months now, and the bid specs went down, and, and I'm, I'm assuming that he just assumed that, I give you a price, if you're wanting two, and I give you a price of one, here you go. So, whatever, whatever y'all need to do.
If y'all do that first one.
If he, if he wanted, he could add two in the morning, continue the bid and just add the price.
We'll see, that's a bid.
Add to the bid.
The bid, the bid. Don't be it.
I get it, I sign it. Some kind of invoice, something.
We can set this bid, so this is a. We'd be in for the two vehicles, right? With more hit. And then, you know.
And then he'd take just one separate one?
And I'm, I'm not trying to talk him to anything, but he, he tells me that the bid, the prices go up every month, and he has held me this price since early December, it didn't go up in January. And I don't know what, it may be a different price in January, or February, I don't know, but I'm not trying to talk him to do anything wrong.
Oh, I see, we were doing.
Well, we're just listening to our, our talk.
And then do the other one later.
And just do it, if you can get, if you get him to send it in the morning, and the bin number just shows something.
Oh, yeah, I can do that.
And then I'll see.
Can I use those?
So do you want, just talking to Eric, do you want us to accept these two right now, and then you do that other one? And I mean, it is what it is, that way it doesn't hold these two up?
That's all the problem.
And that'll solve it.
So when we got devoted on next year?
The one will be devoted on next month.
Well, he's, we're not gonna hold that price probably for another month for that issue.
But at the same time, we can go on the two that we have, so those don't go up. So, we don't.
I have a motion to tell yourself, we did, they handed it in, as it was handed in, correct? Can I ask real quick, are, are we doing, do we have to get another bid on the? Yes.
On the one, Eric said, should be better.
Unless you can just talk them in.
I don't play one, but it's in the way.
They fit one, they're almost nine dollars, I would call them right now, I'd probably get it.
Alright, uh.
I'm sure good.
Thirty seven pound dollar, he'd probably do it.
Yeah, that's it.
Any other discussion, okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Craig, Greg, did? Everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Kelly Morgan?
Yes.
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 Motion fast. Uh, RFPs, we need to go out and meet with the sheriff to get the timeframe, if he don't like him, with the other. Now, you, you said something about this, but this is coming out of designated fund, so.
Come and ask him.
Trees, is that right? You won't need a budget amendment, just going with the two, because you had to.
Okay, so you're good. Alright, that takes care of that. Employee Appreciation Day, bids. Need to run RFPs for roots at hospital building A, B, and C in the east side, just a center, county executive.
Yeah, so, you all know that going in and out of building A, water damage, that's what's gonna be in the temporary law for. So I contacted, uh, Radley Roofing to come out and just kinda help to give us estimates. Well, uh, Mosh was there with me that day, was walking into building B a couple of months ago, a year and a half ago, we had a water issue in building B, turned it in on the insurance, and it was crazy as pain. Insurance paid to redo everything on the inside, nothing on the outside, but there was a company came in, we done a cool seal move, eleven months, had a leak issue, they come back, they fixed it. One year guarantee, thirteen, fourteen months, they had another leak, so here we are again. Also, Land Service in building D, uh, C, they have a leak issue, so, Andy Cheeky contacted me with the sheriff department, I got about two hundred foot of the flat roof that's pulled up from Justice Center. Just to let y'all know that I will be running RFPs for all four of those buildings, because estimates are a lot more than the bid limit.
Do you, just, uh, Justice Center, absolutely. I don't know whether anybody here likes it or not, but we need to talk the duck tape. About them buildings up there, and see if they're gonna pay their share since they own part of it.
Correct.
And we can't do this, just scramble it down their throat. Ain't no need to put them out, they ain't gonna pay.
We talk to them about it, we might go with a courthouse.
Yeah.
Take a good time.
Get everybody moving. Okay, so what do you need on that?
Just to let y'all know.
Okay, just to let you know. Any other discussion on that? Alright, resolution for CD food insecurity program, county. County executive on that.
What is this resolution number, John?
That'll be.
Twenty three.
One, two, twenty three.
This is in regards to the CDGB grant, county is applying for a partner with area food bank. So, this resolution number one dash two dash twenty three. Polk County, twenty twenty two, community development block, block grant application for CD food insecurity program. This is a resolution authorized by county executive to submit an application to the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development for a community development block food insecurity grant in the amount of up to five hundred thousand dollars. Partner with eligible agencies to help address food insecurity needs. Whereas Polk County recognizes that the COVID nineteen pandemic has resulted in the consumer price index of food in September of twenty twenty two being at eleven point two percent higher than the previous year. Whereas the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics show households in the lowest quantity of the consumer expenditure survey spent twenty seven percent on household food income, while also spending the least amount of total dollars, whereas according to the Big America, of over eight hundred thousand Tennesseans are food insecure. And the U.S. Department of Agriculture shows that over thirty percent of Tennesseans are designated at low income without access to a supermarket within a one mile urban area and ten miles in rural areas. Whereas, the state of Tennessee has also recognized this problem and is now allocating Community Development Block Grant Food Insecurity Fund in order to assist eligible agencies with the purchasing of equipment and supplies needed to the partnering agencies to increase their capability to distribute food to low income communities and populations. Whereas, only the county can make the application for these funds, up to the maximum amount of five hundred thousand dollars, of which six percent or thirty thousand can be utilized for technical assistance and grant administration. Whereas, there are no matching funds required as part of this project. Whereas, Polk County will partner with South Tennessee, Southeast Tennessee Development District to take requests for grant funding from partner agencies, award funding for eligible activities to partner agencies, and sub-grantees administer all grant activities, including the procurement, the capabilities, the financial request, for the reimbursement and for record keeping associated with this grant. And administrative funds paid to the Southeast Tennessee Development District are grant eligible expenditures, now therefore be resolved by this Polk County Commission. Polk County is herein unauthorized to submit this grant and the applications to the Tennessee Department of Economic for Community Development for the amount of two five hundred thousand in the Community Development Block Grant Fund to assist with meeting the food insecurity needs. Be it further resolved, if said application is approved, the county executive is hereby authorized to accept on behalf of Polk County's said Community Development Block Grant. Execute any and all documents entered into this agreement necessary for the successful application and award of the grant, which included, including a project administrator agreement with the Southeast Tennessee Development District subject to the ECD approval. Be it further resolved that this resolution take effect from this day and it passage after another well fair requirement be passed on January the nineteenth, twenty twenty three.
I have a motion.
I have a motion, second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Kelly?
Yes.
And government?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion fast, and I think that's the quickest I've ever heard roll call. Just saying, alright, uh, nine one one board vacancy, uh, county executive.
Once again, this is just a courtesy, let everybody know that there is a nine one one board vacancy. If you all remember in the past, this is totally at my discretion. Uh, but I've always give this board and everybody a courtesy to let you know that we are gonna be taking applications for the nine one one board. The state have brought, officially brought me the resignation that was turned in. That resignation was, uh, the last day of December, so December the thirty first. I hope they think it was just right before or right after the agenda was made, and I told you I already had it on there. So, I got it officially within the last ten days, but this is just to let everybody know.
Yeah, the resignation was December the thirty first, so we couldn't go down there until.
And, and currently, cause I know I've heard a lot of different things, but, so currently, you have, district one has two representatives on the nine one one board, district three has three representatives on the nine one one board, district four has one representative on the nine one one board, district two has none. So, if anybody that is interested, and I've told a lot of yous, I'll say it again, if somebody with telecommunications turns in, I don't care if they live in district forty two. I, I would go for the best board that's qualified to their position, but also look at making sure that the district is represented well.
Any other discussion? Next is, uh, four eleven right away, and that, that's actually gonna be Commissioner Brooks on there.
Uh, I'll make this quick, uh, what definitely is, everybody's major, uh, highway four eleven, four lane, not so highway sixty four highway. Uh, it's not from sixty four highway south of Georgia lane, it is a huge ticking time bomb safety hazard. Uh, sixty four is Georgia lane, we got thirteen trees only been held up by phone line. Uh, there are seventeen trees that are dead, that would easily take out the phone line if they fail. Uh, we had somebody driving, one of our residents driving home from Florida, not long ago, like all the way home from South Florida, and got no coal tree, but heaven's held a color, from South Florida. Uh, I just think the state needs to give this some attention, you know, it's been, uh, big, T dot is, and, uh, Chattanooga and the bigger gyms, but this needs addressed, it's, uh, it could be anybody sitting here, our family, the school bus, uh, eighteen wheeler swerving the mist one, come in another lane, but, uh, Lawler looked at it, said, I've had several calls, people in our district, it is a huge, huge safety hazard, and I've got a resolution saying that Dan Hound and Bill Ait, hopefully they'll just draw attention to it, and get something done quick with it.
You got a lot of traffic coming from Atlanta, too, when the river's running.
Uh, yeah, I got a resolution. But anyway, the resolution, uh, John Holt wrote this for me, I just say it, the matrix star, I think it's as hard as even by my standards. That's like, so, but anyway, resolution, uh, one, three.
Brooks, I didn't think you'd actually read it for you, Rick.
Uh, one, three, twenty three, whereas the county of Polk has changed condition to state of safety, state highway four eleven, state route thirty three, and whereas limbs and dead trees have been lining highways for several months, and complaints have been coming in, the county official, safety concerns, for school bus traffic and ways of trees on power and phone. for school bus traffic and ways of trees on power and phone lines. And whereas, the county has not had the resources, now with work to be done on the state of Tennessee, right away, and whereas highway four-eleven intersects with highway sixty-four, which is a gateway to Smoky Mountains in Tennessee, and gives cause to make the whole state look bad, but is from other states to the region. Now, therefore be resolved by the loading board county commission, spoke county meeting, regular session on its nineteenth day of January twenty-twenty-three at Polk County Courthouse Committee, at the quest to be Major Governor Bill Lee, Representative Dan Hound, Senator Art Swan, to make such a quest to Tennessee Department of Transportation to remove such road debris, dead trees, beautifying like driving conditions safely on highway four-eleven.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, pass resolution one-three, twenty-three.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Kelly?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. All right, motion passes, next is the number three, B C, we done addressed that from the early. So we've addressed that, uh, we've got an answer for suspensions, we do have, uh, Mr. Mobs who was wanting to address this earlier, and I, I apologize, we need to make sure we got through, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sorry.
I'll ask this to Ted Rude. So we can...
Okay, uh, we have a twist for suspension, four, one.
Move to county clerk's office. Move him out.
Okay. I have a motion to suspend rules for a, uh, move on county clerk's office, do I have a second?
Okay.
Have a second. Motion second, the suspension of two-thirds. Be seven votes, okay, roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
And Donovan?
Yes.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mel Jackson?
Yes.
Chris Jordan? Yes. Phil Morgan? Yes.
Tom Pritchard? Yes. Okay, and we are in suspension.
I'm gonna be real quick with this. Uh, uh, we had an issue, and I want to publicly apologize to Jackie for maybe some of the miscommunicated disinformation caused the hostile work environment toward her. It is gonna be looked into, some of the acts that were done. Uh, we're not tolerating bullying and intimidation of no pattern. And whoever she answers to, this person, will, they're gonna stand up at some point and tell them why we put up with that. But anyway, with that said, uh, I talked to Doug, and he was okay with it. We're gonna let Jackie back to office in the other day, as you walk in, as long as we're gonna use the courthouse. And they'll solve this whole problem, give her what she needs, as far as maybe hopefully getting her license and all that up there for everybody. So, um, make the motion, I, I wanna ask that, we, everybody okay, we move rolling.
Okay, we have a motion, have a second. All right, roll call, actor suspension of March two-thirds, roll call is seven, two. Just so you know, before we start. Roll call.
Kelly?
Yes.
Keith Parker?
Yes.
And Donovan? Yes. Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Mel Jackson?
Yes.
Chris Jordan? Yes. Phil Morgan? Yes.
Tom Pritchard? Yes.
Yes.
Motion, hurry. We're back out of suspension, we do have to go back to the ambulance, uh, issue. We got time, let's, now.
Two minutes.
Two minutes, so... We're back on ambulance issue, what's the pleasure of the wish, and y'all have a motion, y'all have a consideration, y'all want to try to put it off, what do you wanna do?
I don't know what relation you're taking that.
Okay, we got here a motion, run the call, we'll put them all three options, and the first one that gets it, we'll make what we go with, or we can put it off the next one, it's up to y'all. You got three options.
Got three options.
You can rebid, then you can go back to three answers. Uh, what was that thing? Are we gonna say what we're at? And what you do is you start with three terrible ones, and you pull up, and you keep pulling, and you get it wrong, it gets, uh, six buttons.
I probably took much confusion, my next question is on the cremation.
Mm-hmm.
Let's go, we'll play it for one more month.
I'll say.
That's a good one.
That's a good one.
There it is. I'm just gonna ask if any is opposed. This is all my two little, uh, next month's agenda, number one thing. Uh, Mr. Mobs, I apologize, we are clear with the agenda, please.
I got one minute, first.
No, you don't, you don't, you don't, man, somebody...
Go, just go, call.
Here's the reason I'm here.